Keep us in line.
Always me.
All right, today we got our budget workshop in, uh, where's Angeles? Do you want to start off with any, any little saying you want to say or however you want to do it?
I just wanted to say a couple of general comments and then we can get the department heads. The major increases for the 2022 budget were related to group insurance due to increased rates, due to increased rates for 2022 of approximately 345,000, plus the majority of departments budgeting group insurance for all their authorized positions, which was an increase of approximately 540,000. General liability increased significantly as well, approximately 366,000, a 15% increase. Retirement increased approximately 152,000 or 2%. Sales tax was budgeted 7.5% higher than the 2021 budget. General fund years, year-to-date sales tax collections for 2021 have increased 11.9% over 2020 collections and are expected to be over budget for the current year. The manning increased by four from 694 to 698, and Fleet Services is requesting to move a part-time position to a full-time position. The city received 6.7 million from the American Rescue Plan Act and is expected to receive an additional 6.7 million during 2022. There was one transfer from Riverboat Gaming Trust Fund to Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund, budgeted in the amount of 800,000. No transfers from the Public Safety and Health Trust Fund were budgeted. A minimum of 15% of budgeted expenditures must be maintained in the general fund balance. This requirement is met for the 2022 budget. Water and sewer budgeted expenditures increased mainly due to increases in administration and expenditures related to running the treatment plants. Civic Center budgeted expenditures increased due to a bathroom remodel that's planned. Streets and drainage budgeted expenditures increased due to a planned maintenance, which is expected to result in reduced repairs and maintenance in the future. Hotel motel taxes budgeted expenditures increased for arena equipment and capital projects. And arena operations budgeted expenditures increased mainly for marketing operations and food and beverage expenditures. Are there any questions in general regarding the budget?
You did a great job.
Thank you.
I like that.
We're just being here a few months.
Thank you. We tried to add a lot of help, though.
Oh, I know. Remember we told you this was going to help you?
Thanks to Finance and Accounting for all the help.
Mary, would you like to say anything before we get started?
Uh, I'm just, you know, I'd like to get this budget going and be ready to go for next year, guys. I know we can get it all going. And I want to thank you very much for taking care of all our finances and you've done an outstanding job. I really appreciate you.
All I can say to the department heads is, um, you know, usually we just come up and, and if there's anything exorbitant in your budget that, that's gone up that you want to talk about, you know, and any capital expenditures that you need that's going to be pretty big, just let us know what you've got planned for that. Other than that, same thing as usual, we just go, go by each, uh, each department. And I think, um, Amanda, we'll just go by what you've got here, okay? If that's okay?
We've got the fire department.
Oh. Fire Department, Mr. Brad.
All right, uh, is it okay to speak fire and EMS with the 73, 27? All right, so the, the one thing to note, we did go down 19,000, a little over 19,000 in salaries. That's due to combining a position, uh, in the department. The three major increases, just as she said, uh, health insurance, general insurance, and retirement went to 33.75%. So, besides that, there's really nothing that's of major significance, unless y'all want to talk about any one of the line items.
He's about where he was last year, I mean.
Yeah, and, uh, operational budget. On the capital budget, there is, uh, one big expenditure on the fire side. The biggest is, uh, 1.475 million for a ladder truck. That truck comes up once every 10 years. It's a program where we replace one truck a year. So it'll be frontlined for 10 years, be reserved for 10 years, and then it'll go out of the fleet. Now, this is the most expensive truck we have. It's the 100-foot aerial running out of the main station. But as you're aware, you got to have it for PIL because you have a few buildings that are over four stories. So it's required a 100-foot aerial. We cut down on other things in the capital due to having such an expensive vehicle this year and that one. On the EMS side, we're going to go ahead and, uh, do an ambulance, just like we do a remount. But besides that, all the other ones are pretty standard, uh, standard things we do every year.
Counsel, y'all have any questions for Mr. Sagon? Thank you, Chief.
Mayor's office.
Amanda, do you, one thing, do you want to say anything about the mayor's office? That is pretty small. We just. Yeah. We'll just hit the big, the big, uh, things. Human Resources is Trey here.
Good afternoon, counsel. Uh, the only thing, uh, is on our capital budget, I need to replace the mail vehicle. It's 12 years old. Uh, it's been in the shop three times for the air conditioning, not working this year. It's had a couple of other things, and that's pretty much the only major thing that I had on our budget.
Yours don't change much either.
It doesn't have, sir.
With only, what, three people?
Four.
Four people?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Trey. Police Department. Mr. Chris Estes.
Mr. President, counsel, I appreciate y'all allowing us to come up here and engage in this conversation. There's a few areas, uh, where our general fund salaries can increase. That's due to the, uh, new K-9 unit, and that shows to be an increase of 322,853 dollars. It's important to have those three positions because we're not actually pulling three officers from patrol-related functions. So it's certainly going to be a great benefit, uh, to have those additional bodies on the street. Uh, software maintenance, this is something that's kind of beyond our control with our computer systems at the police department. That's increased 135,000 this year. Originally, whenever the computer programs were purchased, there was a five-year maintenance agree. And we're now outside of that window for that software for us to. So it's important to have this, uh, software maintenance on there to where we don't end up having to pay significant cost in the future to, to repair something or to buy new software. Our wireless communications increased 1,000, I'm sorry, 1,169 dollars due to the license plate reader trailers, those, uh, speed trailers that have the speed on it. And they're all linked wirelessly with the sheriff's office and with the Bojor City Marshal's office. So they're a tremendous asset to have whenever it comes to being a crime-fighting tool for us. An additional, uh, we have K-9 expenses, 2,500 dollars to cover food and vet visits. So that's relatively low considering, you know, if you were to take your own dog to the vet. And that will be through Dr. DeVille at, uh, it's off Viking Drive. They're going to be able to handle our, our K-9s for us. And then, of course, on the, uh, capital stuff, we have 39,000 dollars, uh, for the purpose, the three dual-purpose K-9s.
Y'all going to build kennels at these, uh, the people that you choose to do that?
It will be at the handler's house. Uh, and it's easier to do that rather than hosting them a, at the station. And it's certainly more cost-effective to do it at the handler's house. Typically, what we do is we have those handlers sign a contract that they will remain in the unit for three to five years before the city incurs the cost. You don't, we don't want somebody that's going to become a handler and immediately end up getting out of the unit. So we want a little bit of commitment before we start putting something in somebody's backyard.
Chief, you, you made some changes in your department, some productive changes.
Yes, sir.
Have you looked at, in retention of officers? Is that, is that something that you notice that is hard to do? With things being as they are across the nation? Or has it not been difficult for the city of Bojor?
Retention is always, retention and attrition, you're, you're going to have those issues. I mean, people end up getting to the point to where they retire. We're just in a time in society to where i- it's not really a popular thing for people to want to get into law enforcement. And I think that starts at the top with the culture that we create within the department and within the city. And each of y'all have been so gracious with your, you know, with how you support the police department. And I think that that's a pivotal first step into making people realize that this is the place that they want to be. And, and so it's more so culture within the department that we're looking to change to where people want to stay here. And that regardless of the pay, I don't think people leave necessarily for pay. Pay is an issue and people have to feed their families. But at the end of the day, I think people, most public servants are, feel that they're called to that. And I think that if they're treated appropriately, then we have a good, uh, chance of keeping them around.
Sure. At, at one point, the city had what is called educational incentive. And that was to incentivize those who had a four-year college degree that they would get a little extra on the, at the monthly. So going forward, what, what's the projected cost for something like that to, to reinstate? I think we had it a long time ago. And I just think about with the nation and how important it is to send a message of appreciation for persons who choose this type of vocation, especially now. And so I, I just wanted you to maybe look into that number. And, and I don't know if we can find it this year, maybe next year, so that we could just try to incentivize for folks to stay in that, in that field. You know, not cross the river or go to another city because we have that as a incentive to stay with Bojor. Do, do you have a hard number or a soft number that that might cause?
I think what we looked at last was about 86,000. 86,000 to give, uh, educational incentive to our officers. And you are correct. An officer who's better educated is less likely to use force. Studies have shown that, and to cost you less liability-wise in the long term. And it is difficult to find a person with a degree right now that wants to come to work for 36,000 dollars a year. But I do think that an education incentive would certainly be an opportunity to attract those at BIPSY and LSUS and Centenary and other colleges within the area to where we have a better educated force. And as a matter of fact, it would give our guys an incentive, our, our men and women, an incentive to continue their education, which is a wonderful thing. There, there are, so through the Fraternal Order of Police, you're able to go at least get an associate's degree at, at no cost if you're a member of the Fraternal Order of Police. So those are things that are tremendously benefi-, you know, beneficial for our employees to take advantage of. But as of right now, there's no incentive really for them to, to continue their education other than their own desire to do so.
Yeah. I, I just think, uh, I, I so much appreciate law enforcement and the quality of, uh, members of the law enforcement in Bojor. And I just think going forward, we as a council, we as a city, we need to think about retention. We need to think about the quality of person we want serving the citizens of Bojor. Something as simple as, as this, that, that's a doable thing, I feel.
Yes, sir.
And, and I, I don't think we've looked at it this budgetary year, but we really need to go back and revisit that.
Yes, sir.
In my, in my, um, thinking.
I, I'm certainly in agreeance with you, and I'd love to sit down individually with you and the council and, and find a way to make that happen. And, you know, it may not be the 2022 year, but if we get on point and on track for 2023, that's certain, certainly something I would love to partner with council with.
Okay. My, my last thought, your, um, your management style is different. You, you have more boots on the ground. And I wonder, do you have enough boots on the ground in, in our city? I don't think the police have had any increase in staffing for a long time. I know we've had position unfulfilled too, but we just not have had any increased requests for a long, long time.
Yes, sir. As, as far as staffing, I, I'm not going to sit here and lie to either of y'all and tell you that with the police or fire, it's probably not an issue. Because it is. I, I mean, realistically, we have 14 districts. It'd be great to have 14 officers on the street at any given time, work one officer dedicated to that district. What you get is better, better coverage, uh, whenever it comes to our officers working those areas. They're able to engage with the public because they may not be as busy in that district. So you're able to make those connections within the community, get outside of the car. If you see children outside playing basketball, you're able to go out there and dedicate a few moments to interacting with the public. But, you know, we would have to do a staff study and, and really figure out where our numbers are and, and where we should be with our calls for service versus our, uh, you know, our calls for service in our population and, and get those hard numbers to be able to explore that in the future.
Okay. Just food for thought. I hope, I hope we can come to some type of resolution going forward.
Yes, sir.
To look at that. That's just my thoughts.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate it.
Okay.
I'd just like to, want to say how much I appreciate your efforts, uh, to run an efficient force. And I also appreciate Chief Sagon's. Just in my summary of the budget, we've got about a 58-million-dollar budget. About 40 million is going to police and fire. So that's roughly 70%
Yes, sir.
of our entire budget going to protect our citizens and, and to provide for safety. And, and I think that's a, uh, important way to, to spend money. And I, I would like to emphasize, I think we have a, it can always be more efficient, but a relatively efficient administration. If we had a whole bunch of, of, uh, people in other departments, it would eat away at the budget and not allow us to, to have such a high percentage allocated to police and fire.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, you know, it's, it's, it is what it is. You've got X number of dollars, and we're finding a way to get you three extra people for the K-9 unit. I've met with you on a K-9 unit, and, and talking with you, I think that, that's an efficient use of, of revenue, that, that it, it will have a great impact in crime deterrent compared to the money that's spent on it. And, uh, while people are nice to add, uh, if we're not adding people, always look at technology. You know, drones and, uh, people's doorbells that can be networked to help solve crimes, other technology that, that is out there where we can work, uh, you know, smarter all the time.
Yes, sir.
Seems that that, that seems to be ramping up in the police enforcement areas around the country.
Yes, sir.
But thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, we had a good meet, too. I, I agree with Scott on the K-9s. You know, we met David and you and myself. I'm a believer in them. It's like having more, more people, more four-legged people on the streets.
It is, and it, it reduces the risk some, to some of our officers during these, uh, high-risk situations.
Chief, I've seen the dogs walk in my neighborhood. If y'all seen the dogs on the street save an officer's life, one, one officer's life and a dog, I go, the, the dog just saves them. And I seen how they work. And if we have dogs on this street in Bojor City, they scared of a dog. I mean, they'll find a crook so fast, and I mean, safety's number one. We keep safety in Bojor City number one. We've got the police, the fire, the schools. We're going to grow fast, but without safety, we in trouble. And I seen in those dogs, they, y'all do y'all's job and all that. I'm all for you. So anything I can do for you, just let me know.
Thank you very much, sir.
You do a good job.
That's when you see a big, that dog with that big ol' head about this way coming at you. Yeah, hey, please, stop. Oh, they gonna stop.
Chief, I, I'd like to just, again, also thank you for your leadership. And, uh, I'm happy to support, uh, getting you these additional resources that you need. I think it's going to be a good addition to the city. We've had robust conversation about the needs in the police department. So, um, thank you for making the effort to meet with each of us, um, so we can see this as a reality.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to working with y'all a, as we continue. Thank you.
Parks and Recreation.
Big Louie. Mayor President, I've asked Louis to join me up here to make sure I get my facts right and correct. This, this is Big Lou. What y'all receiving is a packet of what we got going on, what we're looking to the future. As you know, we're waiting on the complex to be, uh, finished, anticipating a large number of people coming to Bojor. And, uh, with that said, we got to make preparations for the future to be able to handle this and keep our presentation of our facilities clean where people want to come and play their tournaments here. We have 31 day, or weekends booked for next year already. We anticipate adding to that. Beyond, uh, that, we got 30 acres additional grounds to maintain. And, uh, what I'm asking for is four additional maintenance people to be able to help us maintain the Tinsley complex. Asking for a supervisor to handle the, uh, scheduling, bookings, renting of the AV parking lot, and supervising, making sure our facilities are not abused. We don't allow steel cleats. We want to have people out there, we want to have monitors out there. We want to have people from our city monitoring what goes on in all the fields. We're adding, uh, five new playing fields. We got an ADA field coming on board. If you haven't been driven back behind the old fields, I suggest you take a ride back there. If you were out Saturday and you drove through Tinsley, you saw lots of people for soccer and football. Lots. We were parked all the way and out to Old Shed Road, all the way out to East Texas. That's all the parking lots that we have available, full, grass, anywhere they could park, they were parked. With that being said, uh, I, and I'm kind of skipping around. In the capital budget, I've asked for additional parking and exit down at the soccer, soccer parking lot. That's one of the big items in the capital budget for 240,000 dollars.
Clay, let me interrupt you there.
Yes, sir.
Where would, where would we put that parking on? I know because we, we built one on the other side of football fields when my, when I were growing up, but.
Yes, sir. Uh, we could add, uh, some parking, uh, behind Field One across the road going towards the, uh, animal control down at the curve of Ballpark Drive. There's some area in there that, uh, I'm not sure how many spaces I'd have to get with the engineering and see how many we could add there. But, uh, that'd be an area we could utilize. We own it, we don't have to buy the property. And, uh, I don't know, probably what, how much, Louis, would you estimate?
I, I'm not sure, but I think what Mr. Williams was asking is where would the parking go that we've got in this year's capital budget for 2022? We'd like to take that parking lot at the Tinsley Soccer and expand it all the way up to the new fence where the maintenance road goes. And we would also like to bring some, if you look, there's a ditch over there. We'd like to bring it all the way to the ditch, and we would like to have a better in-and-out process coming into that soccer complex. Because if you were around the park this past weekend, you're going to know very quickly that the limitations of parking for soccer are only going to compound exponentially when we start playing weekend tournaments. Because they were in parked at, uh, we also had B-Park Youth Football going. So you're talking 600 kids plus their parents and grandparents, 1,200 kids playing soccer. And then you throw another 80 to 100-plus teams at the two Tinsley complexes, there's just not enough. So I would, I would suspect that Mr. Clay's going to put parking lots on the next couple of years' capital budgets to try to add to that, uh, need that we have.
Even the ones, even the ones we've added, I mean, we, we've already outgrown those probably by a couple of years.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, we've outgrown that.
How about, you know, when you, when you come in, uh, off of Highway 80 there, there was a, a lot on the left-hand side right there vacant by those apartments. Is that still, I hadn't been over there, oh, I hadn't noticed I'd been over there, but.
That belongs to the apartments on that side over there.
Only other place would be back there right where the Cubby Hole is. And there is a little area up by our football complex. But again, if you put it by the football complex, you're still going to have a bottleneck on Tinsley Boulevard where, where it turns into Old Shed.
It's only two lanes, that's.
Yes, sir. But, uh, that's some of the issues that we're dealing with, trying to plan ahead for. Uh, one other issue that we got coming on board, uh, right now, we're in the process of getting the gates made for, uh, North Bojor and Field of Dreams. And, uh, guys, fiber, uh, getting them fabricated, uh, ready to install. With that being said, I asked for North Bojor that we make a, uh, part-time guy full-time up there. And the full-time guy be made equal to the, what we got at Mike Wood Park because they have to rotate and open and close during the weekends. The only time the park would be closed would be on Christmas Day, like Mike Wood. And, uh, on this separate sheet, I have the cost on it, this sheet. And this allows these guys to rotate without us having to pay overtime or whatever and keep the gates open at dawn, closed at dusk, and prevent some of the, uh, problems that we've had at these parks after dark.
I thought I saw the gate up at, at North Bojor.
Not yet.
No, they end up there, yeah.
Not yet. Uh, Louis, can you elaborate?
Purchase order's been awarded to Lynch's Lawn and Fence. They're also going to be doing the fence work at our Field of Dreams Park. POs have already been issued, they're waiting on materials to come in. As soon as the materials are in, everything will be welded and installed. So I know these positions have not been approved, they're not even on any of the budgets that, that are being submitted. But we've got to make, as soon as the bollards and the fencing is put up at North Bojor, we've got to start that, that day. So we're going to be in the hole a little bit, trying to make sure that we have the personnel to open and close those facilities each and every day up until January. And if we're not able to get these positions approved, then we're just going to be in the hole, and Mr. Clay will have to come back before the council on an as-needed basis to replenish funds to make sure that we do have the part-time and full-time monies or overtime monies to accommodate the, the cost to open and close those on a daily basis.
I thought you were expecting to say Mr. Clay's going to come up there and open and close at night time.
Well, we, we both may, may be on the rotation.
I, I wanted to ask something, just.
Yes, sir.
Information-wise, in your opinion, are, are there any parks that are under-unimized in the city? Do you notice that, or?
All our parks are pretty full. What I've seen, uh, a lot, you know, Patricia Park's well-used, Mitchell Park's well-used, Hooters Park's well-used, and, uh, our rec center, Shady Grove Rec Center stays busy. Uh, we've got pickleball inside it, and, uh, it's really taken off. We're adding two pickleball courts to the gym at Hooters Park, so it's going to be busy in that capacity also. And, uh, as Louis maintains, he's superintendent of maintenance, uh, he maintains all the parks. Louis, have I left anything else?
Sir, all, all of our parks are heavily used. Bojor City is known for a very, very, uh, very good Parks and Recreation program. You see it by the numbers that come from Minden and Shreveport that want to be a part of our youth sports and adult activities. And if you go to just any of our parks on a daily basis, they're, they're very well utilized. I think Bojor City gets a big bang for its buck with the Parks and Rec. I think Bossier City gets a big bang for its buck with the Parks and Rec Department. I lived here for almost twenty years and didn't really realize we had as many parks and sporting and recreational activities that we actually have now that being an employee for the past seven and a half years. So Bossier City has a lot going on. It's a lot to be proud of.
And also, long outline, Little League in Dixie, all their fields have been played on tonight, so they stay busy. Field of Dreams is nationally recognized park. It was a home run. It was a total awesome park.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Having said all that, and I don't want to interject more than I need to, but about the positions, I know that's a lot of money. It's a little over two hundred and eighty-five thousand. We get that. I will say this, if we can ever get our contractor to complete the Tinsley Sports Complexes, you guys and us, we're going to reap that money back. I mean, by the time we get the hotels, motels, the restaurants, the entertainment, get the kids actively involved and come into Bossier City and being excited about coming to Bossier City, I think our tax revenue is going to go up exponentially as well. Of course, that's a feeling, and we won't know till we actually have numbers from an economic impact. But I suspect we're going to have anywhere from eighty to a hundred to a hundred and twenty teams a weekend once we're open and running.
And Bubba, you and several council members been here when we did the World Series with Dixie. You know what kind of numbers we knocked down with it. This will be like that every weekend with these tournaments being held at Tinsley.
When is our next meeting, with Tinsley meeting?
Thursday of this week.
Next Thursday?
This Thursday.
Alright, so we'll have to, we'll discuss those.
Yes, sir.
I got four maintenance workers, one rec supervisor, correct?
And the supervisor is extremely important. They're going to be out there on weekends a lot of the time. They're probably going to be visiting facilities also if we have to do any recruiting to get other, maybe larger tournament venues coming into the city. We're going to do everything we can to keep the facility full. We spend a lot of money out there. We expect to bring a lot of people in and hopefully spend a lot of money to help repay for it. Because in about ten or eleven years, and I'm going to say it out loud, at some point within that ten-to-eleven, twelve-year timeframe, we're going to have to have a plan to replace all of that artificial turf. So it's got to generate money to pay for itself and to keep it in perpetuity, perpetuity, perpetuity to, you know, to fund itself.
I know all the ball fields are looking good. I mean, they really are, but they'll be busy.
Anybody got a question for us?
Clay, do you have a copy of that for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Clay, Louis. Engineering?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We'll do traffic engineering as well on that other.
Yeah.
So in the engineering department budget, when we first sat down with Angela and went over our needs, there's not a massive amount of change between this year and last year. We proposed to add two positions within the City of Bossier's engineering department, one being an additional inspector and the other being an engineering intern, an EI that'll work in the City of Bossier office. And it's primarily to support all of the management work that's going on. And you've got a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of construction, not even including permits, private development, just the various needs that come into the office on an endless basis. And we're covering that with the city engineer and two inspectors. And so it makes it very difficult for us to ensure that the city's getting every, all the value for the money it's spending on those projects. So we proposed that, and as I appreciate Angela, that that got cut out of the budget just from budgetary constraints, and we still would like to see the city fund those positions. We believe they're very needed. So that was the main increase. We also bumped up in there consultant fees. One, that originally was to pay for our contract, but even in the absence of us, we feel strongly that the city's going to need to have support, Tinsley being the perfect example. We could work on Tinsley with the two inspectors and civil engineer that we have in there forty hours a week, every day. It's that big of a project, you know, total project cost fourteen million. We've had countless issues, and just to ensure that the city's protected, it's taken a lot of OT and blood, sweat, and tears on the part of not only the engineering department. I can't say enough about the guys in Parks and Rec. You know, they are just after it every day. So I could flog that horse as much as possible, but I still would like to, for this council to consider that, that those positions be added. We get a lot of calls, got calls Monday regarding flooding and improving the city's flood ordinances to ensure that we can at least stop what we currently got and improve as development progresses. And that's going to take the attention of professionals to make sure that's done properly. And so we bumped that up. And as we've been in the engineering office, we've engaged with other professionals to support some of these construction projects to make sure that where we are unable to put assets on those projects, we can ensure that they're protected, that the interests of the cities are protected by that. So it just costs a little bit more money, I believe, long-term. You know, your little bit of investment you make with those people, turns out you could save ten times that, you know, just ensuring that the quality of the work that's going in will last and stand up through the design life of those structures. So those are the main increases that we've requested. We put in the capital budget a couple of vehicles, one to replace a vehicle that we have that's old, and another, if we get another inspector, we'll need a vehicle for that particular inspector. We've got some computer equipment upgrades and office furniture and things like that, but all that's pretty normal. Any questions with that?
Ben, I see contract mowing charges. You got property standards in here also?
Yeah, property standards falls under engineering. And Clinton, got to give credit where credit's due, spent a lot of time just trying to refine the budget in a realistic way. So the city, you guys see it every council meeting, we're abandoning property and going in and doing that. And we get hundreds of calls a week on making sure that we get, you know, properties brought up. And because of that, you can see it just in postage. You know, just the postage alone and sending out certified letters has doubled. And that's primarily because of the work of proper standards and really pressing into that. They do a good job. I know we don't always, when I'm dealing with them, I don't like getting into the legal mumbo jumbo. It's like, can't we just get in there and cut the grass? But they follow the letter of the law, make sure all that's done. But because of the amount of work we've been doing there, we've asked for a little bit more money there. And that's all based on statistics. So it's just kind of keeping up and keeping that same momentum that we've had over the last twelve months or so.
Yeah, I can say also, because I deal with them a lot, they do a fantastic job. And as you know, we have a meeting up to this to condemn three more hours.
Yeah, yeah, and there's, again, there's a lot to that. Those cases are never cut and dry. And we've worked with the police department on that. They do incredible stuff in trying to make sure we, you know, we have property being maintained and safe for the citizens.
You guys are very responsive. I can't take that away from you. And I know you cover a lot of ground. That, that number for the consultant fees, does that include the Man Shack?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that one fifty?
That would include, we bumped it up from one fifty, but that would include our contract moving forward. So if it wasn't there, you would be absorbing some of that cost in salary and vehicles and other benefits. So whether we're there or you have an engineer that comes in, you know, my daddy always told me to do the right thing. So you're, in my opinion, whether it's us or someone else, we're trying to make sure that it's set, we've set the stage for someone to be successful with the budget that they've been given for 2022.
Okay.
So Ben, just so that, the nine employees on here, does that reflect you and Todd and Clinton? Are y'all in that, y'all are not in that?
Uh-uh.
That's the three that, or not count it, would be you and Todd and...
So the employees in there would be, you've got property standards in there as well as the employees within the engineering department. That encovers GIS. We've got an employee there that's been there for a long, long time that is retiring next month. And so we'll be coming to you in the next council meeting with a plan to fill that position. And we've got a good plan for that. So yeah, ours would be, and it's Clinton and I and whomever else we need to make sure that all our bases are covered. Because as Councilman Darby pointed out, you know, it used to kind of ebb and flow. It seems like we're in a big ebb with the number of calls that we get requesting information. You know, I mean, a lot of private development going on. You know, so it's been pretty, pretty busy up there, which is good.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
My, so, correct me if I'm wrong, the ordinance that we passed a few weeks ago extending Man Shack for engineering goes till October thirtieth or November thirtieth-ish?
If I'm recalling correctly, it ends October thirty-first.
Okay. So I guess, because the, when I first looked at it, the consulting fees kind of jumped out at me as well.
And just so, sorry, not to cut you off, but that's not just for Man Shack.
Right, right, I understand.
So that would be Man Shack if we were there or other design professionals as may be required to execute whatever this administration and the mayor need.
Right.
And there is an endless amount of need.
Which, so I guess my question really is to, is to you, Mr. Mayor, do you have, do you have something? Because that, you know, that number seems to be like a variable. It could be what we need. We could need less. Whether it's with extending our agreement with Man Shack or with someone else, do we have, are you working on filling that position one way or another, so we know?
Yeah, we're talking, yeah, we're working on that, yes, sir.
Okay.
Nine people, though, that's not a bad budget, though. Excluding y'all. So nine people in this department, that's not a bad budget.
Yeah. And a lot of that, again, I mean, five of those are property standards. So when you think about, I mean, you have to come up there, but when you think about the, I mean, just permits alone, just reviewing plans, I could have somebody review plans all day, literally, all day. So, you know, we do the best we can with what we've got, and we try real hard to not have any oversights. And, you know, and they do a good job. But there's, I just think there's so much more that could be done, but we're just limited by the number of hours in a day.
I know every time I've needed you, you've been very responsive and take care of business.
That's our job.
I think that, I think just to be fair to you and your time that we need to lock this feature down in the engineering department, which is why I asked the question that I did, so. But I do thank you.
We're not going anywhere. So we work at the pleasure of the council and the mayor. And, you know, whenever that time comes, we'll be happy to pass the baton. And like I said, we want, we want it to be successful. So it's not a, I don't think there's any greed in there. That's, I'd like to ask for more, but I think I'd ask for the appropriate amount of coverage that would really help. You know, this past year, we've administered over three and a half million dollars in streets and sidewalk improvements, which is normally covered by public works. We've done all of that through engineering with the same inspection staff. So it's, that was six contractors working every day. You know, we intend to do that in 2022 as well. Any other questions with that one? Traffic engineering, some increases there. Probably the primary increase is just in electricity. A lot of signaling and a lot of lighting, and the power bills are just continuing to raise. So we've got that, and then we've adjusted the salaries. Y'all have been gracious in helping us staff up. That department is very well managed with John Kelly over there. And we're trying, you know, a lot of the calls that come in are street lights, signaling and signage. And we want to be able to be proactive. We're just very reactive right now. We want to have a real proactive plan of methodically going through the city north to south, preferably a few times a year, and being on top of that versus just people calling and sending crews, you know, scattered across the city.
You guys, I've seen them all over the city this week, or last week.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions, council?
And we do have in the capital budget to upgrade signals and things like that. We've been talking about that a long time. So we're going to be seeking some grants for that work to try to help on that. But the computer that the city uses to work on signals isn't even Windows 10 capable because the signaling equipment can't be brought up to Windows 10 capability. So we really need to bring all the city's traffic signals into current standard. So we'll be working on that hard next year. All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Ben. Well, how about the arena? I thought I saw Rebecca here. Is she here? Oh, there you are. Your hair color's about the same as mine. It's changing quickly, and Jeff's.
Hey. Hello.
Hello, Rebecca.
Hi, Rebecca. Thank you for allowing me to be here. How can I, do you want me to specifically explain anything in particular, or did you have a question? Well, our budget actually for 2022 is, it looks odd compared to 2021 because during 2021, we basically were closed most of the year and for most of 2020. So it most, is most similar to the budget for 2020, not actual 2020. I did want to mention that we're having some challenges with revenue streams because it directly relates to events, which we have been limited in being able to have events right now. Although we have a lot on the books for 2022, so that's a blessing. We had to recently cancel three events due to the Delta variant and shows being worried about spread of disease, so we had three shows recently canceled. But I do believe that 2023 will be, or, excuse me, 22 will be better. One of the biggest things is naming rights revenue. The agreement that we have with Brookshire Grocery Arena is they pay an amount equal to a percentage of our performance based on a four-year average. And so with 2021, us not having as many events as we had in the past, some of that will get prorated, so our revenue for 2022 looks a little bit lower than in the past because we have to make adjustments based on that. As far as capital improvements, we have a number of capital improvements that we've been looking at, and we've been very blessed to be able to earn or be granted the shuttered venues operator grant, which was three point three million dollars. So we're working on doing a number of capital improvements. And so we would be short the grant money, about two hundred thousand dollars, to do all of the capital improvements that we wanted to do. So we did ask for a two hundred thousand dollar investment from the city. And some of that would be replacing almost all the seats in the arena. So that's, they're twenty-two years old, and so that's a major part of the capital improvements.
Any questions, guys?
Thank you very much.
I wanted to ask just one thing, if you don't mind. On the, the grant, it's three point three million. Are we allowed to give your company the money directly since the facility is a Bossier City public facility?
Yes, sir.
Can we, can we actually give you guys the money, that three point three million? Just send it over to you in a check? Is that permissible? Is, is that permissible?
Um, rent, the rent line item is rent that we charge others for renting the facility. So, the city pays us a management fee only, ASM Global, the city pays us a management fee. But all of our bank accounts and everything are really Bossier City bank accounts that we just manage. Did I ask, did, do I understand your question?
Yeah, it's, it's that 3.3 million grant that's going to, we're going to receive.
Yes.
So, in your proposal, it's for capital improvement. So, can we give you that money, your company, that is? You know, like, we, as a city, it's public dollars, and we can't just give money to a private entity. So, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
So, when we applied for the grant, the grant, we, we had to submit a budget as to what the money would be used for. And when we did that, we asked for it to be used for supplies, equipment, capital improvement. Some of the money goes to actually pay the bond that was taken out a few years ago to do almost $10 million in improvements. So, probably about, close to $800,000 of that money is allocated to pay the bond. So, there's a number of things that, that money has to go according to the grant.
Okay.
So, that's how it was allocated.
That's good to know about that bond debt, because that's what I was going to ask too. Will that, can it be used for that purpose? Okay, good, because I, I wanted that to be the case.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
And I, I think, Ms., the discussion I had with Ms. Bonavir in reviewing the terms of the grant, that if the city were to directly transfer the money to ASM Global, then ASM Global, that would be taxable income to ASM Global. And therefore, if the city expends the money on city property for improvements, materials, projects and things of that nature, then ASM Global does not have to pay taxes on the money. Were the city to, it would be permissible for the city to give a check to ASM Global, but then ASM Global, that would be counted as income to them, and they would have to pay taxes.
We, as a municipality, we actually could give them a check?
We could, because it's, it's, it, because they're in a, 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 for lack of a better term, a public-private partnership. However, and, and it's, and, and the, the money is being spent for a public purpose on publicly-owned property. I think the problem comes in the language in the grant, that ASM Global is a for-profit entity.
Sure.
And therefore, they would have to pay taxes on 3.3 million, and you wouldn't get as much bang for your buck if you had to take out the tax money, the tax revenue.
Yeah, that's, that's a question, I'm just surprised that we could even give them the money as a public entity and they being a private entity. Because we can, not-for-profit, we do give money, we allocate money, but I don't know.
Not, not so much give it to the company, but if we were to make purchases or investments for the arena, and it's done through ASM Global, it would be taxed. Whereas, if we work with the city and the city issues a purchase order and anything like, that is purchased in that way, then it's not a non-taxable, it's tax-exempt. And so, the money, so if we need to, you know, one of the thing on the capital improvement plans is to recaulk all of the exterior of the arena, because everywhere that the concrete comes together, all of that caulking is dry rotting, and it's letting water come in, and we're getting flooding in different areas of the arena. So, you know, if that's going to be, and this is a ballpark, but if that's going to be, you know, half a million dollars, three-quarter of a million dollars, you want to be able to make that expenditure without paying tax on top of that. Because really, it's a city building, and that's city money to invest into the building. And so, it really shouldn't be taxed, so, so that's how it's handled.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, council?
Okay, thank you very much.
Amanda, I see you have tax administration on there, I don't think we've ever had them up here, have we, guys? But if they're here, they want to talk, come on, talk.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Michael Norton, I'm your tax administrator for the parish, I work for you all. I've recently had a resignation in my office, my audit manager. She's been with my office for 15 years. This is a, a problem in my office. I now have a shortage, a manning shortage. I just had this resignation recently. It, it happened before the proposed budget, so I'm coming. And I'm asking you all to amend my budget by a certain amount of money, about $14,000 for next year, so I can raise the salary, so I can hire someone. Because I don't believe I can get someone in next year with enough experience to replace her. The current salary that, that she's working at, I've enjoyed that with her. She's, I hired her eight years ago as the audit manager, when I was promoted to the assistant administrator. So, that's what I come here before, to ask. I do not have any information to give you right now. I can give you that later, but, because I got the information so, so late after the proposed budget. But that's what I've come before you to ask. Do you have any questions for me?
Let, let me just say, I'm, I'm sorry for your loss. I mean, that is, I can tell, that's, that's difficult.
Yes, it is.
And we appreciate the work you guys do. That's, yeah, that, that just makes sense that you would want us to try to get that resolved. So, thank you so much.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, and that's like, that's something we will go get together, and we got several of you, as you heard, people needing, uh, more people in their department, so we'll definitely get you, get you somebody.
I appreciate that, thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have no one else on there, except the mayor's office, Amanda? Oh, Rodney, you on here anywhere? I, I see you sitting over there, quiet.
We have Civic Center's on here.
We got Civic Center on here.
Yeah, but nobody's over there, eh?
Fred is right there.
Where's Fred at? Oh, there he is, okay.
Mine's basically the same as last year, every year, other than I did want to take, uh, I got a part-time position, I need to make it a full-time, I'm so shorthanded right now.
Shorthanded?
Shorthanded, come check it out. Bad.
Okay, I, I saw that in the notes in the, in the budget there, so.
That's all I had. And on capital, the only thing I had in there, we've been fighting for 20 years to get all new camera system. I think it's a cost of two million or something like that to do citywide at the park, you know, like Parks and Rec has no cameras, and to keep the theft down and everything. Those gates are on automatic, they shut at 5:30 every evening, but on weekends and holidays, certain times, they do open up. Anyone coming there with all the traffic we have over there. I'm, I got in my budget to put in a new camera system for the garage, and some of it's covering Parks and Rec. And there's going to be a couple cameras on the far side to look over utilities and stuff, but still ain't, isn't going to cover everything, but.
I think the mayor's got something he wants to get rid of up there, so.
This system, I've been here 17 years, and the system was here before me, and it, it, it doesn't work anymore.
It sound like you need to get your gates worked on too, huh? It sound like you need to get your gates worked on, not opening up all?
No, the gates are good, we finally got that click.
Oh, okay.
System working, and everything's working now and all that.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Rodney? Thank you, Fred. Amanda, since you're, uh, who else we got? Oh, I'm sorry.
Civic Center.
Civic Center. I didn't see you back there, Fred, I'm sorry. You still got people over there?
Couple.
Afternoon, yes, so that's actually one thing I want to talk about, is adding one more event coordinator for downstairs. We have been getting by with me plus two, I would like to get at least one more added in the future.
We got to start doing business first before we start adding.
Yes, sir, and we were doing good up until a couple months ago, when this new Delta variant came out, and some of the events are kind of on postpone, or on hold. But we're still doing, of course, right now, we got the shelter, so.
You're full right now.
How many visitors you got over there?
We've got, uh, right now, they're down to about 30, um, from the 250-ish they had in the beginning. So, they're trying to get them out by the end of the week, I believe. And then we should get rolling again on some more events. We got a lot of events still planned through the end of the year, hopefully, they can cap them. And this other thing, too, I'd like to add, is maybe get another take-home vehicle for our department. The one guy I have that I work for is on 24-hour calls along with me. Just like to get him a vehicle to, you know, be able to bring in on the weekends, on the evenings, when he has to come in, as well as use it for concession supplies. We have to run, get concession supplies once or twice a month. And all I have is a pickup truck. And I actually got caught in the rain the other day with my supplies in the back of my pickup truck. So, just something I'd like to consider.
Rodney, you got any wrecked vehicles over there?
They can be used, yes, sir, they can be used. Just something to, you know, for that situation.
Human resources, I don't know what you want to get rid of.
I bet.
That's it for me, I need.
Any questions?
Yeah, uh, what is the $200,000 in building and improvement?
I think that's for the restrooms that we're?
Is that the parking lot?
Yeah, the restroom improvements.
Bathrooms, bathrooms, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, very good.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Bob Brown. We got to make it snappy, because we got a meeting here shortly. Well, I have one, you going to stay?
Hold, which one is it? Yeah, I know.
I won't take up too much time, I didn't have very many changes at all. Nothing major, other than we wanted to add one position back into our office, because we got over $817,000 in COVID money that requires a lot of paperwork to get it done for the next couple of years. And we'd like to add that position back in there, and we're paying for the salary with the grant money that's coming out of the grant.
Is that already budgeted?
It, we actually have a?
Angela, is that already in?
Ooh, are we not addition, huh?
Y'all are?
We signed the grant.
Enough of dollars real quick.
Sir? We got $100,000 in admin money on this last grant that y'all saw that came through, so we just playing money there for admin, but.
So, it's going to be paid through the grant money?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
You know, uh?
Which is a one-time money, by the way.
Yeah, my, my concern there is you add an employee, and you have that, that responsibility to pay them every year, but the grant money may only be for one year. If we have a special need, Bob, I, for paperwork related to COVID, my initial thought is, maybe we talk about this later, but see if there's a way to outsource or somehow utilize a service that could help you. And then once it's over, you know, that, that part's over. And you could use some of that money to help, but then you don't have the responsibility to pay a person.
Yes, sir.
You know, down the road, when you may not have the revenue coming in to do that.
I was just thinking, we, a part-time person is kind of what I was thinking. And this money will actually, it'll last for about four or five years until it's all spent. So, we'll have it available. Makes it quite a good.
So, you're saying that, 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 the, the grant is sufficient for a part-time person for four years, not just a one-time?
Yes, sir, like I said, we had it for admin under the, that second grant we got was a hu, we put $100,000, a little over $100,000 into admin.
Okay.
Just in case we needed it for something.
Well, I guess you could justify temporary part-time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Temporary.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Wallace, another one we got to think about, along with the rest of them.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Amanda, you want to come up and say anything, if you're just starting it, and come on, now? Talk bad about the mayor, or whatever you want to do.
Not yet, huh?
Just another day.
I talk bad about him all the time, so.
No, I mean, it's been a, a great first, a little bit less than a week, actually. So, anyway, this is wonderful to see how everything is, each department comes together, and then we hash it out. So, anyway, I'm just thrilled to be here, and again, thank y'all for this.
Are you meeting a lot of good people?
Wonderful, everybody's been great. So, I've been very needy this first, these first few days, and anyway, everybody's been really accommodating, so. It's been great, thank you.
Mr. Nottingham?
Yes, sir.
I think we let you off easy last time, but this time, I wanted to ask, there is not a cost of living adjustment in the budget. Was that something you guys discussed and determined that we just didn't have the numbers? What, what was discussion on that?
Well, this part, most of this was already done prior to me coming in. But I will tell you, from what I've heard, it's 6.2% is what the recommendation is. And I, I truly don't see how any business or entity would be able to support that. So, you know, that's, that's a tough thing.
Yeah, you know, the, the employees of Bossier has sacrificed a lot in the last couple of years. I think it may have been since 2018 that there's been any adjustment to, to other than police mandated adjustments, the 2%. And it's just seemed difficult to think that these people are going to stay with the city, and, and yet, there's no adjustment to their salaries for, for quite a while now.
And I, I think with COVID, that's definitely been something that has put everybody kind of in a freeze.
Yeah.
And I, I hope we're on the other end of that, and, and that this next year, we'll really see a lot of that bounce back to be able to look at doing that for the next budget. So, but every, every employee in the city is so valuable, and we definitely want them to know how appreciated they are.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Mayor, you get the final word. Make them good words, okay?
Well, I mean, I, I know that we're going to make this budget work, and I appreciate all y'all's hard work. I appreciate all y'all's hard work and all the people y'all, that y'all lead in each and every day, and I appreciate everything y'all do, and 2022 is going to be great, I'm ready.
I appreciate everybody coming. We're adjourned.